Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, August 20, 2019. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. And first item on our agenda then is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Johnson to adopt this evening's agenda. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. The first item then is the approval of the minutes from the August 7 meeting.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Demmer to approve the minutes of August 7, 2019. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We have three items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one, which is item two on your agenda, is approve final payment to North Valley for Project 18-1 Street Reconstruction. The amount due is $32,196.56, which is $18,501 over the final contract, but the actual project costs were more than the final contract amount due to quantity adjustments from the original bid. So this will be approving final payment to North Valley in the amount of $32,196.56 for Project 18-1 Street Reconstruction. The second item on our consent agenda, which is item three, is to approve temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license to Coon Rapids North Star Lions for a military softball tournament at Sand Creek Park. The appropriate fees have been paid, the certificate of insurance for liquor liability is on file, the background investigation is being completed by the Police Department. The temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license will be valid from 9:00 a.m. to midnight from September 6 through September 8, 2019. So with this action, we will approve the temporary strong beer and wine liquor license for Coon Rapids North Star Lions for use at a military softball tournament to be located at Sand Creek Park, 1,008 Northdale Boulevard on September 6, 7, and 8, 2019, contingent upon a successful background investigation. And then the final item on our consent agenda, which is item four on your, on the agenda, is to receive the mid-year gambling expenditure report. Staff has received and reviewed the semi-annual reports for January 1 through June 30, 2019, showing gambling expenditures within the city of Coon Rapids and trade area for the seven organizations at 14 locations. The combined net profit this period was reported at $478,206.7, with expenditures within the trade area, which includes city of Coon Rapids, reported at $592,032.46. The reported combined expenditures specifically within the city of Coon Rapids was $555,076.96. A note should be made that the American Legion Post #334's reported expenditure percentages are skewed due to the fact that they reported a net profit of zero but had expenditures in both the city of Coon Rapids and the trade area. So with this, we will be receiving the gambling expenditure report for the first half of 2019, and that's our consent agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
Move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Grisgoviac. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the consent agenda is adopted and approved, or whatever it is necessary. Next item on our agenda is item five, which will be to hold a public hearing. It's a grant application from the United States Department of Justice. And Chief, do you want to, you want to hit on this one?
I do want to do that, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I do want to do that.
He really does. Yeah. This is an annual grant that the city of Coon Rapids has just awarded. It's peculiar because we don't actually apply for the grant, we simply get a notice from the Department of Justice saying that they would like us to give, or like to give us some money to help with law enforcement purposes. This year, it was $12,847. The only requirement of the grant is that we hold a public hearing, that we make a proposal to the public for how we wish to spend it, and that it not be supplanting. This is left over from the Stimulus Act in 2009, so if the federal government wants to give some of Coon Rapids taxpayers' money back to us in the shape of police equipment, we're happy to accept their money. That said, our proposal for the expenditures would be actually three different things. One is a, it's called a Centurion Scout covert portable alarm system, which is a really cool way of saying it's upgraded technology to what Councilmember Wells would know as a Varda system. It's a modern Varda system. And what that is, it's a kind of alarm that we can place at job sites, like construction places, and there's, I won't, I won't give away too much detail, but there's a wide variety of ways for it to be automatically set off, and when it's set off, officers are immediately notified that the alarm has been triggered, and they can respond without somebody who's attempting to steal something knowing about it. So it's a, it has been a very useful tool in the past, the old-fashioned version of it. This new version is consistent with our new radio system, our 800 megahertz radio system that has encrypted channels. I think you remember, we had, we spent unfortunately a lot of money last year on radios, but it's consistent with our new radio system. That's the bulk of the purchase sets, roughly $9,000. We also want to spend some money on Taser cartridges, which are training, meaning they're, they're duds, so to speak. They're actually expensive, like $15 for each cartridge, but we like the officers to practice, they're less lethal. I know we've been over that term before. Less-than-lethal training, that's an important tool for intervention, and those Taser cartridges are a big deal, so it lets them actually pull the trigger and have the Taser probes be activated so that they're good with their target placement. And the third item is, is two new printers for printing barcodes for evidence bags. We have an automated system using barcodes to track evidence, and we just need printers to print up the labels. So the total cost of the equipment is $12,847, oh, I'm sorry, the grant is $12,325, so there's a difference of $522. And just for the sake of information, it's way better to spend more than the grant and cover the overage with budget than it is to spend less of the grant. Oddly, if you don't spend even a handful of dollars, it's a very messy paperwork process to give them back their $5 or whatever it is. So that's the short version of events, so if we could hold a public hearing and, and if anybody wanted to weigh in on those purchases, that'd be great.
All right. Councilor, any questions before I open the public hearing? Hearing none, all right. We'll open the public hearing on the proposed JAG, Justice, what do I, Department of Justice, JAG, Justice Assistance Grant. That's the word I was looking for.
Yes.
Public hearing is open on the Justice Assistance Grant. Nobody wants to address us on that, so we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to approve entering into the MOU with Anoka County for the JAG grant.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And we're on to item six. I do like that, Chief, you refer to Councilmember Wells as, with the old technology. I'm thinking, how far back was that? I mean, is that the hand cranks and stuff?
Like Atrix tapes.
It's just a guy yelling.
All right. Item six, continue public hearing to vacate the public roadway easements. This is, the HRA currently has a purchase agreement with Center Homes to develop the HRA-owned Port Riverwalk site on the south side of Coon Rapids Boulevard near Avacette with residential uses, including the sale of detached townhomes. Council has accepted a petition requesting a public hearing for public roadway easement vacations and set a public hearing for August 20. So now we will continue the public hearing to consider these vacations to September 17. What are we doing?
Do we not closing the public hearings?
We open.
Anything tonight other than to say we're going to have the public hearing, we're asking that you guys just make a motion to continue the public hearing to September 17. Your Honor, move to punt.
Okay. Councilmember Kicker?
Well, I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing to consider the public roadway easement vacation to September 17, 2019, my 25th wedding anniversary.
Oh, second to punt.
I had to take it.
Motion by Kicker, second by Johnson.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah, Councilmember Geisler.
Do we have to open the public hearing to be able to continue it?
In this particular case, no, we didn't.
Okay.
Because we're required for this public hearing to publish notices in newspapers and on the site itself and various places within City Hall. We didn't do any of that because we didn't have the, the legal descriptions that we needed. We do now have those, and we'll be putting them in the paper this Friday, assuming you guys continue the public hearing today, and we'll go from there. So we do not need to open the public hearing tonight.
All right. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Any more discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
I just have a question. It seems odd that we're holding this public meeting open, but we're already grading that site over those, over those roads, right? I mean, the grading operation is already taking place. We're okay with that?
Yeah. Operation? We can do that. We do have some authority to open and close roads.
All right. It just sticks, sticks out at me. I don't want to start approving moving dirt on that site.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right, then that hearing is held open until September 17. All right. Item seven, Consider Resolution Number 19-12A9, awarding a contract for Port Riverwalk Phase I Street End Utilities. Mr. Himmer, you want to hit on that, or you want me to just hit the talking points that I've got here?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We opened bids last week. We received a total of five bids, with the low bidder being Northern Lines Contracting. They came in almost right at the engineer's estimate, so prices being good, and it's the city's responsibility for the infrastructure under our TIF districts, and so staff is recommending award to Northern Lines Contracting, $1,681,846.65, and I'll stand for any questions you have.
All right. Council, any questions?
Have we worked with them in the past?
Councilmember Johnson, as of yet, no. We know several people that work for the company, but we have not worked with them. We've done some checking for some work they've done in Ramsey, Farmington and such, so we're confident they can do a good job.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I'll move adoption of Resolution Number 19-12, parenz nine, close parenz, awarding a contract to Northern Lines Contracting, Inc. in the amount of $1,681,846.65 for construction of Phase I streets and utilities to serve the Port Riverwalk housing redevelopment.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
I would like to have discussion. I'm not a developer or contractor, but it seems odd to me that we'd be awarding a contract for this public infrastructure work, and we don't have a final plat yet. So in the EDA meeting, I alluded to that, and I know it's coming, and it's probably going to match what the preliminary is, but that gives me pause. That means that if the agreement doesn't go through, we would start public infrastructure without, without a plat. So I would just like to have that discussion, hear what you have to say.
Mr. Fernelius. Mr. Mayor. I mean, that's a good question. I think the, the issue is that the city is in control of, of this process, and so I think we're comfortable recommending that the council award this contract. We've already awarded a contract for grading, we've started that work. Center has agreed to reimburse us, that was part of the Second Amendment, which the HRA adopted earlier this evening. I think we acknowledge this is an unusual project, the timing of this is unusual, but again, the goal has been to try and get this project started in 2019, and so part of that is to do a portion of these public improvements that are part of this contract. So again, it's not the way we would normally operate, but under the circumstances, we're comfortable that, that, with the risks that the city is taking.
As a clarification, I think the goal was to get the project started in about 2006.
That's true. That's true.
But this year, the goal was to start it this year.
Yeah.
And that is kind of my point. I mean, it's been an ongoing thing, and there's been some hiccups along the way with that tract of land. I just, this to me, doesn't seem like we should be moving forward until we have a final plat, so.
I, I understand the concern. I don't have, I don't share that concern. I want to, I think it's a good idea to just keep moving, get it done, because if the wheels come off with something, it's still going to move forward with housing in some fashion. We're still going to need the utilities under there. I don't know, I think that, I think we need to keep moving.
Mr. Mayor, no, for me, I look at it as the, the delays that we've had are paperwork and legal descriptions of, on the piece of paper, and that where the lines are going to be, is really where the lines are going to be, it's just what is the label we put on the parcel and how is it described? That is what is hindering us to make sure that it can be effective and legally recorded the right way, that it stands with all that. So I don't see that it's a risk, because what we're going to do is really going to be the same, it's just how are we legally describing everything? We have to get through those paperwork things, so. I don't see that all of a sudden we're going to say, oh, we're going to move the road somewhere else. But, you know, we've got the plan, things are pretty much set and ready to go as soon as we get the i's dotted and t's crossed.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I also think it's important to, where we can and where we have a bid that is within our budget, to lock that in when we get the opportunity to do that, and I see that's what we're doing here. I would really hate to delay and then not lock that in, only to have things go significantly up. And I think those of us that have been on the council for a term or more, and I remember back to Councilmember Wells when we were building Sand Creek, saying we should do it now, and there was a, a delay, and we ended up having to pay significantly more than we otherwise would have. So I see it as being a good thing to lock it in while we've got it within our budget and we've got a good bid on it. So that, I'm going to vote in favor of it.
All right. Councilmember Demmer?
Just a question. So in a contract like this, I assume it takes them more than a week to finish it. Are there any contractual outs? Like they start the work, we ask them to cancel, we don't pay full price? I'm just, just trying to get a handle on how much money's actually at risk. I, I don't think it's a high risk, but I think it's just good to know how much, how much it would cost to not pay the full amount.
Councilmember Demmer, members of the council, I'll defer a little to Mr. Brody on this, but it's my understanding, once we enter into this contract, we're going to contract.
It's gone. Yeah, so I assumed, I just wasn't sure if you had any sort of mid clause.
Got to have our typical standard.
Okay.
Contract that we have with our.
So they're going to build that road and bury those things.
At least that first phase portion, yes.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed.
Aye.
The motion carries with one opposed, Councilmember Grisgoviac. We are on to item eight, Consider Adoption of Ordinance 2225 to Extend the Moratorium on Self-Storage Facilities. So really, all we're doing is just looking at taking the moratorium that's in place and extending it for another, another six, an additional six months. Correct, Mr. Brody?
That's correct, Your Honor. I can give you more, yes.
Your face looked like you had more to offer.
I was, I can tell you that we are looking at proposed changes to the code, and we're probably going to bring those in. Like, Mr. Fernelius, if you wanted to add in, I think we're anticipating bringing those changes to the Planning Commission in September, then likely then would come to you guys in October. That's the tentative timeframe right now, so, like I said, we are not obviously bringing this to delay anything, we're just need a little extra time to bring those changes to you.
Okay. Mr. Fernelius, did you have anything to add to that?
Mr. Mayor, I don't with that.
Okay.
Mr. Brody is correct in terms of the timing, so the Planning Commission will see this next month. Council would follow.
All right. Councilmember Demmer?
So we're allowed in total to do a 12-month, and we've done a six-month, and we kind of ran out of time while working forward on it, and we talked about only doing a two-month extension or a three-month extension, and then there's the risk that you're not quite done, you have another couple of months. So the six more months is not necessarily a full six months, we can always pull it back off if we get everything done ahead of time, but it's the max, we can't go beyond it. I'm, for the same reasons, I thought it was reasonable to do it the first time, I think it's reasonable to finish up the, the work that, that got done to evaluate this use. So I was going to make a motion, unless you had a different comment? We can comment during the comment part. Okay. So I would move to adopt Ordinance 2225 to extend moratorium on self-storage facilities.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Grisgoviac. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
So it's really more of a comment for staff to just say the proposed ordinance updates. I know that we've, that there's been conversations around, you know, zoning code and what, where these should be relative to permitted uses, those kinds of things. My comment is that I hope that our ordinance changes also addresses the design considerations and what comes to planning in September. And I know that we didn't come to any real general consensus as a council on that, so that would concern me if that's not included.
Jim?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
My only comment on the extension of the time is that I would like to see us, and I, this is the intent, move forward as reasonably quickly as we can. I'm not in a big favor of moratoriums in general, but I understand why we're extending it for a six-month period to give us that maximum flexibility, but it'd sure make me happy if we got it done sooner rather than later. That's it.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to adopt an ordinance extending the moratorium on the new development or expansion of existing self-storage facilities in the city for an additional six months. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item nine on our, this evening's agenda is to consider adoption of Ordinance 2226, establishing stop signs on Lynette Street at Mississippi Boulevard. This intersection was brought to the Traffic Review Committee's attention by Coon Rapids Fire Department staff due to recent motor vehicle accidents. The Traffic Review Committee met in the field on June 17 to evaluate the location, gathered accident history and traffic count information. The TRC, Traffic Review Committee, believes north and southbound stop signs would improve safety for motorists driving in the area. The council introduced this ordinance on August 7. As this intersection is included in Street Reconstruction Project 19-3, staff recommends the sign installation coincide with the contractor's schedule for completion of roadwork on Mississippi Boulevard. Does council need any further information on that, or somebody want to move that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll move adoption of Ordinance 2226, establishing stop signs on northbound and southbound Lynette Street Northwest at Mississippi Boulevard Northwest.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 10 on this evening's agenda is to consider legal action against opioid manufacturers and distributors, authorize a retainer agreement. Mr. Brody, you want to do this, or you want me to read your, your discussion points here?
I think that, I can give you a little bit of an overview.
Okay.
Your Honor, fellow councilmembers, we did discuss this at a work session a couple of weeks ago. The city has an opportunity to get involved in the opioid litigation. Typically, a city of our size wouldn't have those kinds of resources to be able to do that on our own. We were approached by a law firm, a local law firm, Hoff &amp; Berry, who's also associated with a couple of national firms, and they're able to sort of spread those costs across a large amount of clients and, and be able to do this on our behalf. It's an opportunity for us to, to get involved in that. We believe that opioid manufacturers and distributors have played a role in the opioid crisis that we have, and, you know, that's sort of a theoretical, you know, what damages we had. I think we can point to that, we've had some specific damages here in the city. You heard from Chief Wise that night at our work session, that we have responded to all kinds of opioid overdoses, him and our fire department, we've had other opioid-related incidents, we have theft crimes related, or crimes related to opioids, like burglaries, robberies, thefts. We have to have increased first responder training to deal with overdoses, to deal with that kind of drug use, using reversal drugs like Narcan, and those actually have a cost. We've had to get new equipment in response to these issues, including police equipment and their evidence lab, and that's just sort of the direct, very direct cost, not to include sort of indirect costs that our residents and businesses have had. So we find this is a great opportunity for the city to get involved. It doesn't, isn't going to cost us anything, maybe a little bit of time upfront to provide some information to our law firm, but it basically, if we don't receive, or there's no settlement, or there's no money coming to the city, or a pool of money available, then we're not going to be responsible for any of the cost. They'll take those costs out of that, out of any settlement or any recovery that they get, and so it's a, a no-risk proposition for the city. So we're asking that you authorize us to, the city to go ahead and do that, and that you guys enter into that agreement with the law firms to represent us on that matter. Stand for any questions.
All right. Council?
Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
I understand there are states and counties all across the country that are joining these litigation cases. If we join in on this, from the workshop, I wasn't quite clear if it's like a class-action thing with us and other cities, or are we kind of individual?
We will be.
Yeah, Mr. Brody, if you could just touch on the multi-district litigation component.
Sure. We will be an individual plaintiff in this particular matter, so we will be suing them individually. Now, with that said, our litigation matter, our particular matter, will go to this multi-jurisdictional litigation. That's right now out in Ohio, there's one federal judge that's overseeing all the county and city cases, and so we'll be in that particular pool in the sense that the rulings out there may affect it, the settlements may affect us individually, but we won't, like I said, be part of a pool. We're wound up with a $25 coupon at the end, if, you know, like you'd see maybe in a class action. Now, again, I'm not promising that we're going to see a whole lot more in terms of a monetary compensation, but certainly there's an opportunity for that. If we don't do anything, we're not going to receive anything, obviously. And the other reason why I think that cities are getting involved is, we saw with Big Tobacco, went directly to the states. Some people aren't necessarily particularly pleased with how that may have turned out where the money was spent. If we do receive some money here individually in the city of Coon Rapids, obviously we'd spend it probably specifically on the costs that we've incurred in, in terms of the opioid crisis. If that answers your question.
That does answer, and I mean, if, if our city, which we have incurred expenses due to this, and if we have a better chance of maybe getting something back through litigation, I think, I don't think we can lose on this.
All right. That almost sounded like a motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion. Your Honor, I would move to authorize the city to bring an action against opioid manufacturers and distributors, and further authorize you, the mayor, and the city manager to enter into an agreement with Keller-Lechner LLC, Consevoi McCarthy Park, PLLC, and Hoff Berry PA, the three law firms that are referenced in the memorandum, to represent the city in this multi-district litigation.
Okay.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Your Honor, go ahead.
Whoa. Councilmember Wells?
I will support this, even though I would like to go on record that only the attorneys will make money on this, as it always, so I've got to kind of hold my nose, but I will support this, because I don't want to stand in the way of the city maybe receiving, you know, 39 cents.
Might have been a $25 coupon even, I thought.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I, I understand Councilmember Wells's apprehension about the, who's going to benefit the most from this kind of litigation, but I also can tell the public and tell the council the most from this kind of litigation, but I also can tell the public and tell the council that as a criminal prosecutor, felony prosecutor, and a child protection lawyer, that the vast majority, a significant majority, of the criminal cases and broken family cases that I deal with have some chemical dependency component to them, and a significant number of that, that group of cases, probably a majority, is directly opioid-related, or opioids plays a component in it. It's a massive problem in our society, and we can get way deep into the weeds on it, but the bottom line is, is this litigation gives us a little bit of a voice with the conversation that is happening. And so, I don't actually expect to see much of a monetary benefit to the city, but maybe our opportunity to share a little bit of a voice with respect to some of the, what I'm expecting to be, creative settlement offers. And so, whether they come up with a nationwide grant system for law enforcement, whether they come up with a way for cities to, that have incurred expenses to essentially file an application for things in the future, whether they come up with public service announcements, or education, or training, I think we want to have a small voice in the process. But if we don't participate in this litigation, we've got no voice. And so I think it's a good thing, and I would encourage the council to vote for it.
All right. Your Honor, Councilmember Kicker?
I'd just like to say that due to direction from my day job, I'll be abstaining from this vote. So, just to let people know that, that's the reason why I'm not going to vote either way.
Yep, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
And I would like to reiterate some of the things that Councilmember Johnson said. You know, for me, being able to say, you know, we have the ability with this litigation to put ourselves forward and say, this is not right. We have to do something to fix it. We don't have within our city, you know, we can't fix everything, right? But if we can raise our voices, if we can help highlight this issue and put more pressure to have work done collectively, I think lending our voice to that initiative to do something, to move forward on this, whether we get something directly back from it or not, I don't think is the big reason why we're doing it, but it's to say, this matters to us. It matters to our citizens, and let's step forward and try and be part of a solution.
All right. Mayor? Councilmember Grisgoviac?
In that, I mean, just Councilmember Wells, you mentioned that just the lawyers are probably going to get the settlement here, and I don't think that's the biggest thing. I probably do agree with that. But I asked in work session, will Coon Rapids being added to this on top of states and counties maybe help, help the situation? And the answer was yes, from law enforcement and from staff. So, in that respect, I'm going to support this.
Your Honor? Councilmember Wells?
You know, this isn't my style to drag these things on, but I'd like to point out that this is suing the manufacturers. I mean, other people on council are making it sound like we're attacking this entire problem, which is so complicated, and I know they know that. But this is one very small piece of this issue. You know, we're not, you know, going out there and having a big, you know, battle against the whole crisis.
All right. I find myself very apathetic about this. I'm ambivalent. How's that? You know, because I, even when I get those things at home, I always go, yeah, I'm not joining that, and I'll just throw the cards away. But in this case, it has been recommended that we add our name to this, and at least acknowledging, certainly acknowledging that there is a serious issue here, so. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Abstain?
Yep. And that motion carries one abstention. Councilmember Kicker? And we are on to item 11, which is to consider resolution 19-84, establishing the 2019-2020 Coon Rapids Ice Center rental rates and approve the fee structure. Seems very minimal changes, just a couple little $5 adjustments, and am I missing something, or is that really about it?
Mayor, that's correct. That is it.
Okay.
Somebody make a motion quick.
Yeah.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
Move to adopt resolution number 19-84, establishing the 2019-2020 ice rental rates for the Coon Rapids Ice Center and approve the 2019-2020 Coon Rapids Ice Center fee structure.
I'll second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Johnson. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And then on a related topic, consider approval of the 2019-2020 Coon Rapids Ice Center user contracts between the city and Anoka-Hennepin Independent School District Number 11, and Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association, the Minnesota Blue Ox are all agreements submitted for council's consideration. The agreements are consistent with those approved in previous years, with the exception of the updated rental rates that were proposed and outlined under a separate memo, the last agenda item.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
Move approval of the 2019-2020 Coon Rapids Ice Center user contracts.
Second?
Motion by Demmer, second by Wells. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and those are approved.
Good luck to those teams.
All right. We are up to the open-mic public comment portion of the meeting. If you're here for open-mic, please approach the ambo. Open-mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. Should you wish to participate in open-mic, please approach the podium, state your name and address before addressing the council. Open-mic? All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
And councilmembers. My name is Brian Vale. I am at 13116 Crooked Lake Boulevard. I spoke with several of you at the park meeting. I'll go as fast as I can.
It's all right. You have three minutes.
Okay. Well, my, I'm here to discuss the concerns about the second fishing pier at Crooked Lake Park. The pier existing, this close to our home, has brought a lot of negative exposure into our home. My daughter and her two best friends are constantly hearing lewd language, witnessing public drunkenness, people using drugs and drinking on the pier constantly. This is the pier that's been removed and is now going to go back in the same place. We've had numerous interactions with fishermen that have turned into police reports. We've also had our boat damaged and was a large expense to fix as well. We've collected several bags of empty discarded bait containers, trash that is generated at the pier. Our biggest issue is hooks, bait, and fishing line. We've been collecting all the hooks, lures, and floats that have been wrapped around our dock, boatlifted, and tangled in the weeds between the old pier and our property. Having unsuspecting small children running off the dock to swim is a recipe for injury. We pulled hooks from all three of our children's feet, and that alone is frustrating and painful. A 51-foot distance is the proposed area where the second pier will be coming in from where our fishing dock is, or from where our dock is. 50, 51 feet can be casted with a small kid's pole. There's a lot of room in between our lot and where the existing second pier, or where the existing new pier is. I'm aware the lake is not owned by homeowners, so the pier being so close to the pier line, to the property line, is not illegal, but the judgment of placement has put us in an unfavorable position as homeowners. Our hope is the second pier location can be changed or eliminated. After speaking with the association members from Crooked Lake, the homeowners downwind of the second pier are 100% against the extra traffic and pressure on the lake that it will bring. And if I have another second?
You do. You have another minute.
Okay. I'm not really sure when the city will be proposing to remove the giant pile of concrete where they've now placed a giant smelly dumpster within five feet of my fence. Hopefully, that will be at some point soon. The, the choice of placing a concrete slab and a dumpster within, you know, five to 15 feet of where we sit outside is, seems a little bit, with all the available property on that, in that park, it seems like maybe not the best choice for where it possibly could have gone. So, I guess to close out, the addition of a second pier will probably move all of the fishermen over to that second pier, which will again be within casting distance of everything we own. And the original pier will then become what has already unfortunately become a swimming, jumping point for all the kids to swim and jump off of, which, again, provides another liability for the city possibly.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to address council for open-mic? Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Russell Everly. I reside at 2260 105th Lane Northwest. I don't really have anything to bring. This is my first time coming into this meeting, so I'm just kind of trying to get a feel for what it is that you guys do and be more involved in my community. My wife and I just moved here in October, so I just want to thank you all for what you do here, and I'm excited to continue coming to the meetings and learn more about how I can be more involved in my community and help you guys be more successful in what you do. So, thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Excellent. Go to our website and pick up some of those commission applications. You've got Arts Commission, Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Got all kinds of ways to get involved. So, thank you. Your Honor? Councilmember Wells?
I'm wondering if I could get clarification from staff. I went up and looked at, you know, the beach area again, and what is the situation with the DNR and where we're at with that? Could you clarify that?
Councilmember Wells, what particular?
Well, I mean, did we accept money? Did we make an agreement? Was there?
Oh, regarding the fishing pier?
Yes.
Yes. So, what we had agreed to is for them to refurbish at their cost. We can remove it, reinstall, make it available to the public, the ADA compliant, for a period of 25 years.
Did anything specify the specific location?
Nothing specified the specific location. It's just the ADA piece, which has always been the challenge, to get the right slopes, to get down to that location.
And Mayor, Mayor Council, it should be noted that the, the infrastructure to provide for those slopes and that ADA accessibility is already in place. So, there has been some expense already. We have, we do have that agreement with the DNR for the pier, and the infrastructure is in place to assemble that pier there when it's complete and ready.
Mr. Mayor, is there a way for that pier to be reassembled instead of as a T, as an L, so it would go down and then?
Away.
And then away from that, the property?
I don't think there would be any restriction on that, Mr. Mayor, so I can certainly look at that.
Even that I would think would help. If that's the only spot that we can get our ADA compliance, it seems like that even might be a direction.
So, years and years ago, I had a lawsuit. It was a potential lawsuit that I ended up resolving where it was a dock that had encroached on a neighbor's property and actually crossed their property line, you know, as it went out into the lake. And literally, the way we settled it was to have them pivot the dock in the other direction. So, I mean, it's, it's creative solutions that I think would be interesting to explore.
Yeah. It would be interesting to go out there and actually look and see if that would be enough to discourage some of the negative activities they've had, but.
Your Honor?
Mr. Kicker?
Also, with the garbage, is there, do you ever have garbage cans out on the pier?
We do not have them on the pier themselves, but we do put them adjacent to the pier.
Apparently, that's a bit of a stretch to actually carry it from out there back to the garbage can, though.
I guess so.
All right. Okay. Oh, and then what was the scoop? So, did we put the dumpsters right on the, on the edge of the park then? Is that where they are?
Mr. Mayor, we were looking for a place, I mean, they have to be easily accessible, and so you need some access to a nearby roadway. And so, I'm going to have to talk to Mr. Engel just about. Every time there's a new park, that seems to be the issue, is you get more activity, you get more trash. Are you going to start hauling it daily? Do you find a place to put a dumpster and just consolidate for once a week? And so, I'm sure some decisions were made there to just make it convenient and accessible, but we'll certainly look into that as well.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right. We don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are to the other business. Yeah.
For Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. So, exciting, exciting weeks here. I remember our last council meeting, Chief Wise congratulated the Coon Rapids Andover Little League for winning the Midwest Regionals, and now we watched them successfully go to the Little League World Series and win their first game. That was a lot of fun. I don't know where you want to go from there.
I'll tell you where I want to go from there. I want them to come in. I want to see them. I hope we can get them in here at a reasonable time when they get back and recover from their trip.
Will there be a welcome-home celebration or anything? Do you know yet, Mr. Stemwaddle?
Mayor Council, I haven't heard of anything yet. Certainly, a lot of the information's been shared on the Coon Rapids Andover Little League website, or Facebook page, I should, I should say. One of the things I found just so inspirational about this whole thing, it's partly because I'm a bit of a sports nut myself, is how, what a buzz this created in the community. Everywhere I went, you'd pass by people, and they're chatting about, whether it was Jason Cousnia's homerun?
Yeah.
Or Matty Frecking, or Jackson Knudsen's play at shortstop in that first game.
Yep.
People were just excited about it. There was viewing parties all over the city. And one of the coolest things I just saw today was that even the Coon Rapids Cardinal Little League provided a donation to the American Little League to provide some funding for their, the cost of the trip and so forth. They had a GoFundMe page going and some other things. So, even crosstown rivals were getting together to support the Little League and their attempts out in Williamsport. So, it was a lot of fun.
It was really fun. Matty, Matty was the first girl in five years to play in the World Series, and one of only 19 ever. And apparently, she was on Good Morning America. I didn't get to see that, but that's quite a thrill.
One of the things that I remember, because I watched the games, that they talked about is the gift shops, or the souvenir shops, whatever you call them out there, had the Midwest teams couldn't keep those jerseys in place because all of the little girls were so inspired, and everybody wanted a Midwest jersey, regardless of where they were from. And so, that I thought was pretty, just special that they were such an inspiration.
They had a big shortstop burger for game one. They had a big Boulevard burger for game three. It's probably a good thing they're out of the series, or have way about 50 pounds more.
If there's something that we can do to recognize them and encourage them to come in, I'd love to do it. It's probably the, the nicest, most rewarding PR that Coon Rapids Andover has gotten in, in a recent time. I mean, it's just fantastic.
Yep. That's very fun. Your Honor? Councilmember Wells?
As much as they'd be excited to meet us. From past experience.
With no sarcasm at all.
No, I'm just, I'm just being honest. The fire truck is always the biggest hit. You put those kids on a fire truck, and now they're happy.
Yeah. There you go, Cheak. Piper, you've got your suggestion to bring a fire truck in when they come in, then.
Or, or find out when it is, and we can go to them on the fire truck.
That's true. Absolutely.
But we should still do a, we should recognize them with a proclamation, even if it's one that they don't come in for. Chief Piper?
My understanding that the ride on the fire truck is in, in the works.
Perfect. All right. All right. Other business council. We have the Coon Rapids Business Council coming up next Tuesday, the, is it 27th? 7:30, I believe it is, at the Bunker Hills Event Center. Phew, that was off the top of my head. Okay. Anything else coming up that folks should know about?
Mayor Council, only thing I will mention at this point, and it's still about a month away, but our Love My Pet Fair is really not, is about a month out. Details are on our website, but the event just keeps growing every year. And new this year, and Joan will appreciate this, our city clerk, we're actually combining that event with our Vaccination Rabies Clinic Day, rather than do them at different fire stations. We're going to actually bring it out there and kind of co-locate that. So, a good event. Get some details on our website.
It's, it is really quite an event out there with all the vendors and all the activities and the opportunities, and our canines are kind of big deals out there, you know?
Can people get a dog license at that event?
Yes, they can.
Do we still have those? Do we still have those?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do. You should update yours.
I should update my dog, I guess. I don't have a dog anymore, but...
Side-eyed looks from Chief Wise right there.
All right. Well, I mean, it's just, what, what, 5% of the dogs or something?
So this is where I get to, I get to suggest that maybe we should come up for compliance reasons, a multi-year license, like a three-year license, or something like that. We can talk about it later.
We can, absolutely.
All right. Okay. Any other business to come before council?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.